Okay. Hello, everyone. To the March 21st, happy first spring. Fiscal management committee meeting. I'm going to start with a quick. Introduction. So just looking across my screen. I'll ask all of our colleagues here to give a quick introduction. First, I see Dr. Daka.
Judy Daka. Good afternoon.
And Ms. Bergstrasser.
Good morning, afternoon. I'm Jay Bergstrasser, internal audit.
And Mr. Adams.
Hello, Seth Adams, Director of Department of Sales Management.
And Ms. Webb.
Good afternoon, Laura Christina Webb, Chief of Staff for the Board.
And Mr. Clausen.
Good afternoon, I'm Tom Clausen. I'm the Assistant to the Associate Superintendent of Finance.
And Dr. Joptis.
Hi, everybody. Good morning, good afternoon, Scott Joptis.
And Zarate.
Hi, I'm Lynn Zarate. I am the Director of the Division of Sustainability and Compliance for MCPS.
And there are several others that will be joining us shortly. The students who will be presenting about the composting work going on in our schools. And then Mr. Riley and Dr. Dawson, who will be joining us. There is also a senior leadership. Meeting happening simultaneously, so they'll join us when they can. Oh, I see others coming in right now. So I'll go on, Mr. Riley.
Hi, Ms. Harris, how you doing? Hello, everybody.
And Ms. Windsor.
Good morning. Sorry, good afternoon.
And I'm going to go across. We have three students joining us for a presentation. At Agenda Item 4.1. I'll just ask them to introduce themselves quickly going across my screen. Angelina.
Hi, my name is Angelina and I'm from Richard Montgomery High School and I'm currently a sophomore.
And Shruti.
Hello, I'm also at Richard Montgomery High School as a sophomore. I'm very excited to be here.
And Edvika.
Hi, I'm Edvika. I'm also a sophomore at Richard Montgomery High School and we're so excited. Thank you.
Okay. So first thing on the agenda, does anyone have any edits, comments, concerns about the informational summary from our February 23rd meeting? Okay. Then moving to Segment 4 of our agenda. Our standing item on sustainability. And I'm very excited and happy that we're going to be dedicating this segment today to some of the ongoing work that has been almost purely student-driven. In MCPS. For many years, students plowing the road on areas of work that are completely in alliance with the county's Climate Action Plan. And the vision, the very, very aggressive vision is, as Mr. Adams said to us back, I think in January, at the board table, for the revisions to the Energy Conservation, soon to be known as Sustainability Policy, Policy ECA. So we have with us today, three students who have been doing a lot of work in conjunction with many partners around initiating composting, post-consumer composting in our school system. And so our students, who introduced themselves very briefly initially, are Edvika Agawal, Gibbawave, Edvika, and Angelina Shu. And Shruti. And they're all students at RM and they are going to share with us work that has been happening, actually historically going back pre-COVID. But work that is continuing. Again, within partnership with the county, the state delegation, MCPS, other partners, to bring MCPS to a place of using post-consumer composting as a way that we are achieving our sustainability goals. So I'm going to turn it over to the students. And yeah, you guys are on.
Good afternoon, everyone. Thank you so much for taking the time to be with us today. And thank you so much, Dylan Harris, for giving all three of us the time to speak. My name is Angelina.
I'm Edvika. Both of us are sophomores at RM, as we said at the beginning.
Hi, and I'm Shruti and I'm also a sophomore at Richard Montgomery High School.
We have a presentation that we shared, so we can get that up. Yeah, thank you. All right, so we can go to the next slide. So just to begin, food waste refers to any un-eaten food that's thrown away. So you have unopened food, like a bag of chips or a whole banana, leftover food like pizza crust and extra salad. And then you have unedible waste like fruit skins and peels. We can see all of these different food items as just unnecessary contributors to the trash that burns in incinerators and piles high in landfills. Incinerator companies have a tendency to greenwash their service and claim that they produce renewable energy or offer a safe way to get rid of trash. But in reality, burning trash emits pollutants like carcinogen, carbon monoxide, and nitrogen oxides that degrade the local air, soil, and water quality. They also pose human health risks. And in landfills, unlike other types of trash, food waste breaks down by a type of bacteria that produces methane, which is a toxin greenhouse gas. So while 40% of the national food supply directly goes to landfills and incinerators, that means that US food waste has a larger carbon footprint than the airline industry. So schools specifically are a valuable part of the solution that we're targeting because the issues of the environment, food insecurity, and equity all intersect on school grounds. So first, the waste issue, there is a viable amount of food waste to reduce from Montgomery County Public Schools specifically. A survey conducted by MSW Consultants found that 26% of trash in Montgomery County Public Schools is food waste. That is 26% that could have almost all been composted or redistributed to the community. If we can go to the next slide. We also conducted a waste sort last September that had 100 pounds of trash from just one MCPS elementary school. And that represented 13% of the daily waste that's collected and taken to incinerators. In this sort, we found that only 10% was actually landfill and incinerator trash. The rest was recyclable, compostable, and just liquids. In addition to that, part of the 100 pounds consisted of 57 unopened items like milk, juice, and water that could have easily been donated back to the community and the students.
So adding on to that point about. Sorry, so adding on to that point about how we can donate the food. And then we can go to the next slide. So food waste also ties into another important issue, which is the existing inequity gaps that are present across MCPS. So at many of our schools, we started food rescue programs which recover unopened milk bottles, bags of apple slices, bagels, and much more through the creation of shared tables.
Shruti, go ahead. Okay, so these are pictures of like the program that we run in some of the schools. So the composting programs are very easy to run in schools and extremely beneficial. So all the schools actually have to do is set their green bin in the cafeteria next to the trash and recycle bins. And the bins are already provided to us by the Department of Environmental Protection. The cost of program is roughly around $1,000 every year, which is a very low number on the large scale, considering how many MCPS schools have and how much money we're already allocating to our sustainability plan. So we've already created posters and videos for the students and they were proven to be very helpful in teaching the students. And these students were very excited to actually start the program and they really loved it because they were able to see how easy it is to take on changing health and environment. So all they have to do at the end of lunch, when they're cleaning up, all they have to do is sort their waste into recycled trash food. And if they have liquid, they will dispose it into the right bins. After that, the private haulers will come to the school and collect the food waste from the schools once a week to compost at their own private facility. These programs have proved to be very beneficial and we've seen in every single school that they've started at. So I started the program at Clarksville, Cedar Grove, Wilson Wims, and Beers Mill. And they're all run by private funding. I was able to get the money from the support of corporate sponsors and by applying to grants from different companies. So all three of us started the program at Clarksville Elementary School three years ago in 2018 and we've been running it ever since. And Clarksville Elementary School was able to compost around 2,000 pounds of food every single month. Cedar Grove, I started in October and they divert around 900 pounds of food every month. Wilson Wims, I started in February and they divert around 3,000 pounds of food every month. And I started the program at Beers Mill just last week.
So going on to the schools that Edvika and I have been starting, we're mostly working currently under the Wildlife, Wildlife Fund grant. And we've also been working under other grants to get programs started, such as at Richard Montgomery High School. So under the WWF grant, Edvika and I have already been able to start six of the eight elementary and middle school programs for two years. And you can see some of them and the pictures from them on the slide right now. And the goal of this is really to see the feasibility of this program on a county-wide level. And the answer from our experiences has been a resounding yes. We've learned from these programs that there are knowledgeable staff on the countywide level and the school level, like our building services staff that are excited. And we also have dedicated teachers within MCPS that are ready to participate. But it's just the funding that they're waiting on. And this is the last inequity that should be stopping them, especially as MCPS is seeking to expand sustainability in the future. And most importantly, there is a real improvement impact on schools that are predominantly farms. Out of our eight schools, we have over 50% of the students receiving free and reduced meal service are farms. And four out of our eight schools have over 40% farms rates, with one of our schools having a 70% farms rate. Students there are really excited to have these like shiny new bins and programs that unfortunately, these schools are typically left out of, which shouldn't be happening. So this is why we're really here to ask for county funding to ensure that across the board, young students from every zip code are receiving nutritious food, as well as making a change for their future. Okay, I think we go to the next slide. Here you can just see more of the programs that Shruti, Edvika, and I have been working to start, as well as some upcoming ones. And then I think you can also go to the next slide. Thank you so much. So one important thing that all three of us have been working on is that we worked with students from more than 23 elementary, middle, and high school students in Montgomery County to sign postcards attesting to how important students feel that stopping food waste is. So over 4,000 MCPS students from Northwood High School all the way to Lloydhaman Middle School and then Green Castle Elementary School wrote postcards about the worries for food insecurity or the environment. And they also specifically talked about how they felt composting specifically was the solution. We heard from a lot of farm students who wrote about how shared tables would allow them to bring something home to save for dinner with their families or give to the younger siblings. We heard from other students who are deeply worried about whether or not the environment in Montgomery County will be able to support them 10 or 20 years in the future because of how much waste we're constantly sending to incinerators. There's a deep, genuine need and fear that we saw through this. And these are the voices that aren't being talked about enough are brought into the conversation when we're considering these programs. This isn't just about the composting or just about the shared tables. It's about the real human impact of that food rescue programs that we've been working on, that we've shown for students when they're literally able to eat or live without stressing over the environment. So these postcards show a demand for what the students need and are actively asking for. And that's why we're here today to show you all of these amazing work.
Okay, if you could go to the next slide. So these are just showing the testimonials that we did at the schools. So I think Angelina mentioned, we had over 23 MCPS schools signed. And they signed a total of over 6,000 postcards across all of Maryland. And you can go to the next slide. Yeah, so these are just pictures of us delivering the postcards to Capitol Hill. And then you can also see some of the postcards that were already signed. Excellent. Okay, thank you. So we really want to harp on the fact that this really fits into the MCPS sustainability goals. So as you know, MCPS is among the largest school systems in the country and is the largest county in the state of Maryland in terms of enrollment. This inherently means that we already have more food waste coming from our schools compared to the average county. So it's vital that we take steps to protect our environment. And this can start with something as easy as implementing composting programs at local schools. These programs are extremely beneficial to MCPS and they can already achieve our already set sustainability goals. As we've talked about earlier, composting is extremely beneficial to the environment and to the schools themselves because their chance of getting certified as an official green school significantly increased. And we've already seen this at Clarksville. At Clarksville Elementary School, they were not certified as an official green school before. But after running the program for only one year, they were able to get certified. The ECA Energy Conservation Policy and the county's Environmental Action Plan writes an action needs to be taken immediately against greenhouse gases and a consumption of non-renewable resources. Composting in schools can be the solution to this. It intentionally, equitably, and progressively reduces the environmental impact of food waste and improves the health and wellness, while also providing an effective environmental and sustainability education for students. This is key as it achieves a sustainable environmental footprint and it reduces greenhouse gases emissions, which is extremely beneficial to the environment and reduces energy expenses. By implementing composting programs at MCPS schools, we're able to meet the current needs of Montgomery County without burdening future generations and promising them a better future.
Thank you. So just one more thing to add on, as we're looking to future operating budget and other fiscal year plans, we're really, we already know from our work with the Division of Solid Waste Services that there are already 60-plus schools that are interested in these types of programs. So that's just a number to keep in mind when considering the number of schools we should be allocating funding to. The number is currently around 16. Thank you so much for your time today. And I hope you enjoyed our presentation.
Okay, so I am going to ask my colleagues if they have any questions. And I'll just add that students haven't even covered. I don't think with justice, the work they've done. I think, Angelina, I think these three have mentioned that they started composting at their former elementary school up in Clarksville, pre-pandemic. With little to no support, they plowed the road. Pretty much all on their own, you know, looking, you know, they built the education piece that had to go to each grade level in the school so that students understood what was happening and why it was important. They had to go and get partnership and buy-in from the school staff and the school administration. And then they also had to work with external partners because the compost, after it's being collected, has to be hauled away. And they did this all on their own. And then scaled it up and out to other schools. And they built a coalition. Really just with energy, you know, with just going forward, believing in the mission, and reaching out to different partners along the way to get people to see the value in what they were doing. And then, you know, sometimes there's a, you know, a perfect storm of events. And the work they were doing really, you know, nicely partnered with the county Climate Action Plan as the county is looking to go in to not just pre-consumer compostable waste, which MCPS is already partnering on, but also post-consumer waste, which goes into some of the neighborhood pilots that are happening right now. And I'm very thrilled. My neighborhood is one of those that is part of the county's first post-consumer composting, you know, pilot. And I very happily, you could see in some of those slides there, those green bins, I very happily put my green bin on the curb every Thursday. So the students have been really leading the way. And the work that they've done has just, the county and others have followed along. So I, you know, just huge kudos because. You know, this was really purely student-driven initially. And then, you know, as others, as they reached out and increased their engagement and partnership and others saw the value, they really, really, really increased the number of people and partners coming along to see the value in the work and to support it. So anyway, Dr. Doc, Dr. Joptis, any questions for these incredibly, I mean, they're sophomores in high school? You know?
They have done such an outstanding job of starting the program and getting the right partners. And we know that students have been coming to us and they've been concerned about our buildings and whether we are being cognizant of our needs in the environment. But I really have to thank you, this is a serious program. I remember when CERT started and it was just paper, but this is really quite a job. And I just have a practical question. Each student takes his or her own tray and dumps it. Is that how it works? Because I hope you don't have to do it.
No, we don't have to do it. So basically, already students are like going up and getting up to like their trash and recycle bins. So we have the green bins right next to these bins. So just as they're getting up to dump away their trash to recycle, say, just take their food and put it into the green bins instead of putting it already in the trash can.
That's great. Yes, they should all be involved, but thank you so much for everything that you've done.
Thank you. And yes, thank you, girls. Amazing work. So I just have a follow-up question to Dr. Daka and then one other question. So based on your early implementation in these schools, are you seeing that students and staff are successfully placing their items in the right bins? How much of an issue has that been in terms of, I guess, compliance with getting into the right bins?
I think one important thing, as Ms. Harris emphasized, is that as a program, there has really been like an infrastructure we've been putting in place, like education one, where we have presentations, morning announcements, like lunch announcements, as well as, you know, hands-on waste words that really shows students how they're supposed to be throwing their trash away and their food waste separately. So their education programs are like minimizing, you know, how much contamination we're seeing. But even on top of that, at all the schools we've had, we've never reached the contamination threshold set by our haulers and we never even got close to that. So what we've seen is that as a whole, students are really successful at participating in this program because you can really think of it just like any other like follow recycling service or anything like that. So students are taking very well to the programs. And we've seen that through like post-surveys, you know, six months, a year after we do the programs and they're started, students say that it's very easy to understand.
That's great. That's great. And then my, I guess, bigger picture question is what can the board do or need to do in order to help expand this work? Is it just a matter of assigning resources or is it something else?
It's really just a matter of allocating funding into either the operating budget or any other means necessary. Our goal for the next year would ideally be to start at 60 more schools because we're working closely with the recycling manager, Mr. John Meyer. And he's really been instrumental in getting these 60 schools to express their interest and say that they totally be willing to start if they would just have the money to do so. And then for the future, we'd really like for it to be standardized such that each year the budget does allocate enough money to have all 206 schools composting. As for personnel, it might be helpful to, you know, give some more resources to Mr. Meyer's department within the Division of Solid Waste Services. But, you know, we'll leave that to you all because that's a little bit more nuanced.
But otherwise, we're talking about $1,000 per school per year? Is that what you've said?
Yes. And with a special contract from the contractors and the haulers, the cost might be able to come down further.
Yeah, and I just want to point out that, you know, one of the things the students didn't really talk about so much is that they've really partnered with the haulers to do a lot of research on, you know, what is being collected in the schools. And as I think Angelina mentioned, there are certain thresholds of contamination that make the haulers unwilling to actually partner on a composting program. And we have, because of the educational piece that these students have done themselves, designed, delivered, and implemented. We, the schools that have implemented this post-consumer composting have come nowhere near the contamination thresholds that would cause a problem with our haulers. So they really have soup to nuts, done this work in a really, really impressive way. And I hear every day from students in other schools who really want to partner with this group to bring, you know, composting to their own schools. So, and I think too, as the county builds its own infrastructure around pre- and post-consumer composting, we should see costs coming down because it'll be, I think the county's vision, if you look at the Climate Action Plan, is to expand the capacity for pre- and post-consumer composting to a point that it will just be part of this, all of the county services along with your recycling. The bins that we all put out once a week are recycling and trash, you know, reduce. We want to see the amount of trash reducing and then the amount of composting and recycling increasing. And I think this, I think we're, the students are really in a really sweet spot when you're looking at what the county's goals are and how the work that they are piloting and they've created can build very, very nicely and dovetail very, very nicely with the work that the county wants to do. And really, again, I can't say enough, they did this all on their own. And then, you know, they developed the plan themselves and then got the buy-in from the student, the staff, faculty, students, and partnering with MCPS. So Angelina, Shruti, Edvika, any last words before we move on to Mizurate and Mr. Adams and how the MCPS is centrally supporting your work?
I don't think there's anything else. I think just focusing on how we can look into fiscal budgeting and making sure we're getting the money to these schools for next school year and beyond that is a main priority. And the next class is starting, so we kind of have to leave right now. And yes, also.
Guys.
Thank you so much.
Okay. So now, central oversight sustainability initiatives, Mizurate, Mr. Adams. Hard act to follow, I know.
Good afternoon. I'm going to go ahead and get started with our central oversight of our initiatives. Today, we're going to be talking about some of the data that we have back from the schools in terms of their sustainability action plans and then also talk from a central perspective on our updates for food scrap composting and the shared tables initiatives. Next slide, please. So this past school year, in light of the fact that we were working on a sustainability policy, we changed what was formerly known as a CERT action plan into something called a School Sustainability Action Plan. And even despite COVID, we still had a lot of participation from the schools and filling out these programs and getting them in because obviously, they're used to having to send this report to us and they know that the recycling is mandatory. But we changed the form up a lot this year. We asked them a lot of different questions about how can we support you better? What are your interests? And what we're sharing with you on this slide right here are their top five requests for support. Their number one request for support was how can we increase our recycling and reduce waste? 37% of the schools responded for that. And so in response, we've actually implemented several new low-cost programs for recycling that we've got centralized streams now being introduced that were never, ever introduced before. To give an example, when we had America Recycles Day on November 15th, we actually had a symposium for the students and we shared with them about what happens to their paper when it leaves the school. So it was an educational symposium. And at that point, we also launched a new program for schools to recycle their single-use alkaline batteries, which had not in the past been recyclable. And they've also got a program now where they can recycle their glue sticks and their empty bottles, their empty glue bottles, and they're sending those to us centrally. And those are both very low-cost programs. In addition, there's a campaign that tracks the lumber, well, it's the Rubberized Lumber Company. They actually have a campaign where schools can voluntarily participate where they collect any of their plastic film, things like fruit wrappers or bread wrappers, recital food baggies, or plastic storage bags. The students can actually, in the schools that are participating with that program, they can collect those types of plastic materials and they will be recovered and turned into basically lumber that's traditionally used for decks and that kind of thing. Later on, in the school year, around March 1st, we introduced a program to recycle markers and pens. And that's big, you know, in the elementary schools, all those markers that those kids go through. And that's big, you know, in the elementary schools, all those markers that those kids go through every year. So we're thinking this one's going to be a big, big, big popular program. Today, as of now, with very minimal marketing, we do need to do a whole bunch more marketing on this. But we've got 98 schools participating in that with just the basic word of mouth that we've been getting through on that. So that's our efforts in terms of strict recycling and reducing waste. The second most popular topic was school gardens, whether it be butterfly gardens or vegetable gardens. Obviously, with the pandemic and the outdoor lunches, there's a lot more interest in being outdoors. Third was hosting sustainability events. And then number four was increasing shared tables and food scrap composting. So once we received this information from the schools, we actually took that data and looked at it with respect to how was their recycling going in the school? And did they have really pretty firm programs? And that's what Mr. Meyer used to help guide the students into the schools that, and that, these are just the ones that we've heard about or we've been asked to support in some way. Some of the schools have really creative things where they collect the food and then they give it to the counselors. And then when the students come in to see the counselors, the counselors have food to share with the students. So sharing those best practices and compiling those best practices is one of the things that's going to be really important in order to expand that across system-wide. And that right there is basically a free program. It doesn't cost anything. And then as a last resort, when the food is nearing its expiration date or, you know, nobody's really interested in having it, we've talked with partnering with the other community schools program or other community nonprofits. We've actually had several conversations with the health department and about how it aligns with the county's strategic planning initiatives to reduce food waste and reduce food insecurity across the county. Next slide, please. So it's been a fantastic year in terms of learning what our next steps would be. Students are so much more energetic and much better communicators to their peers too than us adults. And so they're fantastic motivators and ambassadors for composting programs. It's very important, though, that there has to be a coordination at all levels in the school. In some cases, we found that there might be somebody in the school working on it and they hadn't necessarily talked to their administration. Surprisingly enough, we did have a case where that happened. We had another case where a school said, okay, well, let's do composting and not do recycling anymore. And, you know, we've got to make sure that we've got this rolled out in the right ways. If recycling is a regulation, we've got to make sure we do all of those things. So, you know, simple variety guidelines and a checklist isn't enough. We want to make sure that we've got that backbone behind it and that infrastructure behind it so that the schools and their changing needs, we can be here to help support what they need. In addition, both for shared tables and for composting programs, there's, you know, some infrastructure needs that are best in toward to optimize it. Obviously, you need the cans to collect for the composting, got to coordinate with the haulers and coordinate with who's going to get the stuff out on the loading dock. In a food share table program, you know, optimally, it would be great if we could provide all the schools with tables or carts or baskets so that they can roll it to different areas in the schools that may or may not have those infrastructure needs right now. Obviously, then also, you know, signage, getting some posters printed, having an advertising campaign. There's just some other thoughts of what we've had that we might need to implement moving forward. We are in the process of finalizing standard guidelines across the board and messaging across the board so that as we begin to get requests from more of these, from more schools, that we make sure that it's handled in an equitable way across the system and that we definitely have to make considerations to make sure that we do have support in place. In terms of financial pieces of it, in the past, the analysis that we've done is, you know, trash costs about $60 a ton to get rid of. When you look at the prices that we're paying right now for composting, that can be eight to 10 times the price. And we do know it's being handled at a small scale and there is possibility that it could be some economy of scale, but we're not going to see the trash hauling costs go away. And so it will be something very deep that we'll have to analyze moving forward. Seth, did you have any other comments about?
Sure. And yeah, I just wanted to speak on the financial side of it. You know, certainly as Lynn mentioned, you know, the information the students shared is certainly very powerful for us in guiding next steps. But in terms of thinking about this at all schools, you know, over 200 schools, certainly that scale changes. One of the things that we certainly, you know, when thinking about a program like this and even thinking back on our conversation about sustainability policy, one of the things we also have to understand is that, you know, where is the final destination? Where's the source of the composting? You know, currently, right now, Montgomery County does not necessarily have a facility that can support this. So hauling would have to go out of county, which certainly, you know, when thinking about sustainability as a whole, we have to really understand, you know, what are the full lifecycle, you know, analysis of this? So, you know, when thinking and hearing from students about what can we do, you know, having conversations again with our local, you know, council members or county executive just about how can we promote this more local scale so that it does fit within all aspects of sustainability? The other piece to it is, again, just from a financial standpoint, currently there are no funds allocated for composting from a school district perspective next year. You know, we do know recycling costs have gone up, so we're certainly working with, you know, financing to understand that. We obviously still have time to look for ways to incorporate this from a broad perspective. We also have the opportunity, you know, to potentially look at the capital budget. We, you know, the board did make a request for $5 million in sustainability initiatives. Currently, that's all slated to be GO bonds, which your bonds could not support a program like this. But if we were to work with the local OMB to see if there's current revenue sources that we could take, potentially take advantage of, we certainly, you know, could possibly continue those conversations. But realistically speaking, we would want to, you know, really look probably close to an allocation of anywhere from $750 to $1 million for this initiative to roll out to all schools. And just from our perspective, you know, going from pilots from the schools that the students and others have put together is very valuable for us. But we wouldn't want to piecemeal this. We definitely would want to go to all schools if moving forward. So certainly, that's something that, you know, would have to be considered from a budgetary and a board perspective. But I just wanted to put that lens out there in terms of, you know, what is currently existing in the operating budget, but also what are the opportunities in the capital budget as we move forward? So as you said, Ms. Harris, you know, these are, these are obviously very difficult challenges and it's aggressive and we have to do something. So certainly, when we continue to come back to fiscal management, we want to bring that lens of, you know, what are the costs? Where should our focus be as a, as a, as a school district? You know, what should be potentially low-hanging fruit that we tackle first versus what is the, you know, the biggest bang for, let's call it carbon reduction footprint perspective work that we should be and need to be doing? So.
You know, when we look at this work writ large, none of us are going to be here, you know, in 40 years when the repercussions of decisions made now are being fully realized. But these students who are leading this work, you know, they're paying it forward in a way, but they're also really looking at the reality of their own futures. So, so questions, Dr. Daca, Dr. Jopdis, for the MCPS team?
Thank you. Mr. Adams, could you just say a little bit more about your $750,000 figure? Number one, and I guess number two, well, let's start there. Can you just say a little bit more about what that is?
Sure. So really, taking the hauling rates that we are seeing, so $189, you know, a school per month, you scale that up to all schools. You know, one of the things that we definitely have to pursue here is a full district-wide procurement process on hauling of the compost material. Right now, again, this was managed at the local level. You know, when you do look at a larger-scale procurement process, you know, as Lynn said, we could see economies of scale or we could see other aspects of, you know, additional fees or charges associated with larger amounts of composting going to different sites and also the responsibilities that are required. You know, provisions that we have in our current, you know, trash recycling, you know, contracts, you know, around timing. Certainly, you wouldn't want to miss a pickup, particularly when you're thinking about, you know, food waste at particular schools. We don't want to miss pickup on trash. We don't want to miss pickup on recycling. So, you know, putting in those protections and requirements. So that's just from a budgetary standpoint, looking at, you know, what we've seen from the students, but also understanding, you know, what are some of the provisions that would go into a large-scale district procurement and contract for hauling of this?
Anything else? And I would just note, so the students mentioned just basically, and I think Mizurate did as well, HB 150 Senate Bill, 124, a grant program to reduce and compost school waste. That bill actually unanimously passed the state senate, which never happens. So there's energy around this work at the state level, but that energy didn't start there. So there, I think there may well be some real opportunities for our school system. I think being on the forefront of this work to capitalize on the funds that are being made available by the state legislature. I think being on the forefront of this work to capitalize on the funds that are being made available by the state legislature.
are gonna be here, you know, in forty years when the the the